Good morning, we'll call the meeting to order. First item on our agenda for the day is approval of the agenda.
So move.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign, motion carries. Citizens to be heard, any citizens that would like to be heard this morning on anything that's not on the agenda? We've got lots of citizens, but nobody wants to speak, so we'll move on. Approve payment of bills and vouchers.
So move.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign, motion carries. Approve minutes of the April 7th and 14th, 2015 county board meetings.
Move approval, please.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. City of Holly requests for a project to be added to Clay County five-year highway construction. Come on up, gentlemen. You guys can come up here, come on up there and... Morning.
Good morning.
How are you?
Ladies, gentlemen, Mr. Berg.
Morning.
First off, I want to thank the commission, Mr. Berg, for all the work that they do out in Holly with us. Specifically, the last project was the County Road 31-33 project with the lights. And I'm pleased to report, since those lights have been on, we only had one accident on that highway. So it's been a phenomenal change for us. It makes it so much easier for the big trucks now from Cree Tech specifically to get across the highway and go back to the west. And they're running about 30 semis a day out of there right now, they're about to ramp up and go to full speed. So they expect 40 semis a day leaving the plant, and then they get probably 60 trucks coming in from the south from Rolug to bring the aggregate in to the plant. So that stoplight on Highway 10, 31-33 has been just a wonderful addition to the community. So I wanted to thank you for that, first off.
Pretty safe to say, I think, that we probably would not have had Cree Tech there without that stoplight, because that would have been next thing to impossible if any of you driven down there particularly on late Fridays or Sundays, why there's just absolutely no way you'd get across that highway without that stoplight.
There's no gap in the traffic at all, that's for sure. Well, yes, we are here to formally ask that you add the Holly's Phase III rehabilitation project to the county's five-year highway construction plan, either in the year 2019 or 2020. We've had this, this Phase III is our final addition of upgrading all of our infrastructure in the city of Holly. So we've replaced a lot of clay pipe and a lot of iron water pipes. We've got them down to the eight feet level so that they don't freeze up, but there's still a small section on the very east end of town, and specifically from Fifth Street East where we need to do some more work, because we're getting more water infiltration because of the clay tile and such like that. So this project had been on the docket before, and it seems to have just dropped off, and David was down the other day, and he couldn't explain how it dropped off, but it seemed to drop off the list when the 31-33 hit the books. And so this, we're asking specifically, Fifth Street is the 30, is that 33?
33.
North of town is County Road 33, and we're asking that from about Maine north is where we're going to have to tear up, because that's the oldest infrastructure part of town. And everything from the east comes that way, and then goes south to the storm sewer water goes south, the sanitary sewer goes south, down to the water plant, and of course, our water lines go north there and then branch out to the east. And we have looked at that project, and we've put it off as far as we possibly can. We're thinking 2019 or 2020 is really going to be the end of the road for that. And what we're asking for you, from you, is to be put back on that five-year plan, so when we get there, we can work with you and get that County Road rebuilt and resurfaced and back up to speed. And we're going to ask to bring that project out. As you know, the city limit goes out approximately a quarter of a mile, is that right?
Something like that, about the bus garage.
So we have, if you look, if you looked at a map with the city boundaries, there's an area just north of town there that's inside the city limits, but has no water and no sewer. And that just has become a natural, this is where we need to expand our R1 growth opportunities, because we have no place to go R1 housing, okay? But that's a perfect place. Any idea how many acres that is, John?
No, I don't.
I would guess it's probably close to 25 to 30 acres.
Of additional development area?
Of additional area that's already in the city.
Okay.
Just not serviced.
Just north of the bus park.
And there's no service to it right now, there's no construction, no houses, anything up there. Where County Road 15 goes across east to west, that's the northern line of the city, and that goes over to what would be 15th Street on the west side of Holly, so that makes a straight line right across the top of the city. So there's a chunk of that, that area that we'd like to service and start looking at growth opportunity.
Gary, how many, how many open lots do you have in your city limits right now that would be buildable?
Right now, we probably have, the way they're looking, probably 20 to 25, they're all R3, they're all $300,000 houses and up.
Okay.
Probably two or three throughout the older city. One where the house burnt down is, would be a buildable lot, and...
And that's already been sold and planned to have a due...
Probably a couple more.
And these other ones you were referring to as R1?
Yes.
Is that just a different price range?
Yes, that would be a much smaller lot.
Smaller footage.
Smaller houses, probably be housing in the neighborhood of $125,000. Or for those of us that don't want to mow big lawns anymore.
Right, it's a place to go to.
It's a place to go to.
Yeah.
Because that's the next step.
I'm one of those.
Excellent, we have a place for you.
You're not in my district.
You can fix that.
That's another meeting.
No, Frank says don't take anything.
Anyway, with that smaller housing footprint required for an R1 housing, you know, we could have probably 75 by 75-foot lots, and you could have a nice single-family housing project with reasonable price housing. But our water stops at the intersection just north of Reno, which is near the Holly, I guess retirement home, the Holly Manor, and we'd like to move the water and the sewer line up to the corner of that vacant area. And the only way to do that is, of course, is to rip up the County Road 33 and bring that water up. So it's, that's why we were asking just to get put back on your five-year plan, so we can work with David Overbow and his crew, and work with you guys and ladies, and make sure we get this done properly, because it's a good opportunity for the city of Holly to have some more housing available in a reasonable starter.
Mr. Chair, maybe if I can comment, as I serve as the chair of the Highway Tracking Committee meeting, and we just met in our last Highway Tracking meeting and went over our five-year plan, and basically redirected a couple of minor things in terms of what they had proposed, they, me, and our staff. And, I mean, there's, there's some pretty significant projects that go through 2020, and at this point in time, one of the projects that's there, there's a potentially going to be a shortfall for funds already. But as we talked with them, and as we did here a few years ago, we went through a bonding process, and it allowed us to speed up some projects. That bonding process had a six-year payoff, and I think, Brian, you have to help me out here, but I think we're looking at the final payment on that, is going to be 2020?
2019.
2019, 2019. So we're going to be able to, right when that's done, first off, we're going to review, did it work for us? Was, did it make sense? Because when we originally did it, we looked at saving over a million dollars in construction costs from the time value of money, getting them done sooner rather than later. So if that, if that happens and it comes out as good as what we thought it was, you know, we're going to have to review this project, and I, we, to be honest with you, we have to see how our engineers had it ranked before, because there, Frank and I, we saw...
Seventeen.
Seventeen other projects that also didn't hit the five-year plan. But when you start talking about a project that can also maybe lure economic development, I think we'd like to listen closely to that, especially if it's economic development that's already an incorporated area that's ready for growth and just needs a little bit of infrastructure, that's, would make sense to us. So I, you know, I, I would say that, from my standpoint, and Frank's the other one who serves on that, we'd be glad to look at your request. I, I would doubt the timeframe of 2019, I can tell you that. I just think that with all we've got going, but the potential for something in 2020, I think, you know, and again, this, we have to hear from our staff too, and what they think, but I'd be, I'd be open to looking at that.
Do you have any comments from the engineer's office this morning on this, or?
No, I guess I would echo what Kevin said. You're right, we do have a lot of, a lot of projects, especially municipal projects on the horizon, that are all going to have significant needs, and this is one to consider.
Nathan, would this project qualify for the municipal dollars?
It would, yes.
Yeah, and, but at this point, we have, we've, we're kind of, if I remember right in this thing, we've kind of taken that down quite a bit.
We have, in 2018, we're looking at a project in wind, and now basically wipe all of the money that's bundled out.
But again, through the bonding process, that doesn't mean that because this money's not there, you know, it's still, it still is a county road to us, and it's...
Right. And we appreciate your position on that, and we really appreciate the fact you look at it from an economic standpoint. The other side of the coin is, you know, we were, we've got some grants available, safe routes to school. And we'd like to use that at the same time to put in some sidewalk corridors that tie in and bring them to the school. And, and that way, it'd be right along Highway 30, or County Road 31, and so we'd be funneling the kids, it's all north, going north from the fire hall, basically. So we could tie those together on one side of the street, and then when they cross, they'd have one crossing to go directly to the school. You know, instead of having six people, six crossing places, we would have the kids learn that you come down to this street, Elizabeth, or whichever school they want to go to, cross at that point. Of course, we'd mark that as a school crossing area on the county road, and then make it much safer for them as well. So that's the other part of this coin. Now, the project that we're looking at is about $4.4 million today as estimated.
And a lot of that's your underground work?
A lot of it, the vast majority of that is our underground work, okay? So what we're, what we're asking for you is, when we get done, resurface that street, resurface that county road, you know, for approximately eight blocks.
I guess I'd have to agree with what he's saying. I mean, economic growth in Holly, I mean, I've attended several meetings down in Holly already, and they are strapped for, you need some residential area, you know, they are strapped for that, you know? The problem right now, I see, is that 33 is a fairly good road. I mean, it has some cracking and stuff like that, you know, but compared to some of the other roads, it's still rated fairly good, you know, so I don't know what it's going to be like four or five years from now, in 2020, you know, but I definitely agree, I think it should be put on there, just for the sake of letting Holly expand, you know? I think that's a great idea, but it's, right now, for us to tear up a good road, I mean, if we'd say we're going to do this project tomorrow or next year, you know, we're tearing up a good road to, to do this, you know, and it's going to cost us some money then to do that, you know? And right now, like Kevin says, you know, up to 2019, I mean, those projects are all, they're in there, but I see nothing wrong with putting it on the 2020 on up for the next, if we do do the same thing again, you know, get it in with those other 17 projects, and then prioritize it as far as what's going to happen there in 2020.
Okay.
Well, again, we certainly appreciate your consideration of it.
Yeah, we'll, Nathan's here, we'll, we'll definitely talk about it. Our five-year plan for 2015 is just about ready to come before this board for approval. I think, Nathan, are we going to meet one more time on it, or you're in?
To the next board meeting.
Next board meeting, okay.
As far as that's true, Frank, before my time as the mayor, even as a council member, I'm told, Mr. Young, correct me, that the city actually did a mill and overlay on that street at our cost inside the city limits to keep it nice in the city. So that's why...
That's why it's in such good shape.
Yeah, I want you just to know that, that we have done that. It's like when we rebuilt Hobart Street in the city of Holly, there was no county dollars in, and it was a county road as well. We assess that all to the homeowners. So, you know, when the project has to happen, and if it fails, then we're going to have to seriously look at making it happen before time.
I see you have here the numbers of one to two million for, and I'm assuming that's the one to two million for the road construction, that would be our cost.
It's our best estimate, yes.
Because the 4.4 is the total project.
Yes, 4.4 is our total budget right now. And what's, what's not in is what it would cost to extend it another block and a half north to get to that new area.
Has, has this actually done it, has there been any engineering work done on it to this point?
Oh, yes.
To get these numbers?
Oh, yes, absolutely. More engineering is...
Have they, have they forwarded that information to Dave and Nathan?
I don't know.
To the best, to the best of my knowledge, when David was down, I believe he got a copy of everything.
Okay.
More engineering, because they weren't the meeting with us.
I guess, I guess where I'm getting at is if, if we're going to try to fit this in in 2020, we typically have an engineer's estimates on, on our project, and I, I don't know, Nathan, have you had a chance to, you haven't done anything yourselves on it, have you?
No, Dave requested a copy from Tyson, and I hope he's got it, I haven't seen it.
So we would have to have that...
Sure.
Oh, okay, we just got some stuff today, I guess, that I didn't have a chance to look at.
So Nathan, you guys are bringing next week the five-year, updated five-year plan, or is this?
And that'll be through 2019.
Oh, oh, that'll be through 2019, okay.
Yeah, so that's why I say 2019, up to 2019, she's pretty full.
We understand.
And, and we're, as a matter of fact, we're, we're a little bit overextended in it going through 2019. But we're hoping that prices come in right, and, I mean, we had, we just had two bids on two projects where we, I think we saved a total of close to $300,000 on some bids, so that, when that happens, that, that money flows right to the next thing on the, on the five-year plan, so.
Correct.
Jenny? I have a question, Mr. Mayor, on those R3 lots, is that on the north side of the...
It is in the northwest corner of...
So you could access those lots by this project?
We have access to those lots right now on, on 15th Street.
Okay.
Okay? And we paved up to virtually the cemetery on the backside of the residential because of the gravel and stuff. And so the next section would be paved on 15th Street, from that point up to wherever the next major road going into that development would be.
Okay.
And that's up to that developer to decide when that'll be, quite frankly.
So if you, when you get...
But there is no access across the north side of the city...
Right.
From, from 15th Street and 15th Avenue, that corner, 15th Avenue does not go east from there to County Road 33.
Okay. So when you update this infrastructure, you'll add 25 acres to 30 acres of development?
Roughly 20, for, for argument's sake today.
Okay, well, I think it's safe to say we'll give it serious consideration for 2020.
Gentlemen and ladies, that's...
Appreciate your time, so.
Thank you.
We thank you very much for your time today.
Have a good day.
Thank you all for coming.
Rhonda, come on up. Request replacement of financial assistance specialist position. Morning.
Morning.
Things must really be getting tough in social services.
I know. Oh, I had a little rotator cuff repair.
Oh.
I'm good, thank you. Okay, good morning. Well, I am here with Larry Young, our supervisor in our income maintenance unit. We have one of our financial assistance specialist retiring this month, and so we are looking to get approval to fill her position. On the second page of the information that went out in your packet, you'll kind of see where that position lies within the structure of the income maintenance unit. And I don't know if you remember, but it has been about six months since we did this reorganization. We did have two supervisors in that unit, so it was Larry and Mary Lumen Olsen, and then when Mary retired, we restructured to have Larry be the supervisor, and then we added two FAS kind of lead worker positions. So, but the one lead worker that we had is now retiring, so we're looking to replace her, and you'll see on that second sheet the duties that had been assigned to her.
Has that switch worked for you?
It has, it's given the, these three leads have the expertise in these programs, and it's, I think we've been able to do a little bit more case reviews, so that we're seeing that our work is being done accurately. And yeah, it has been a good, good setup, I think.
It's nice to hear.
When is that retirement effective?
She's actually done, well, she'll be done in the office this Thursday, but with vacation balance, it'll carry through till May 21st. So there isn't a lot of savings this year with vacation payout and that kind of thing, but, and we do anticipate, you know, we would post internally, and so we do anticipate that we would have some movement, so I'd request...
Backfill.
Permission to backfill, yep.
Some board's wishes?
Yeah, is that with the backfill?
Yes.
Yeah, I'd second that.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign, motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kathy, you want to come up, request adjusted salary for public health nurse candidate?
Good morning. I also have Kathy Anderson here, who's the supervisor of this program area. We have a open position, a public health nurse open position in our adult health programs. We did get approval from the board a couple weeks ago, I believe it was, so, to hire, and we have interviewed candidates. We have one candidate that we'd like to make an offer to. She has 30 years of public health experience, so all of her career, she's been in, in public health, as well as being supervisory positions for the majority of her 30 years. So we did meet with the pick committee this morning to discuss the various options of placement for her on our salary grid, which is line, or grade 18 is where the public health nurses land, so we were looking at the various options for step of placement for her. And as you can see, Darren has the calculation worksheet, do you want to review that, Darren, or?
Basically, what this was saying is Kathy was requesting to have this person come in at a higher step than the step one, two, or three, because of her 30 years of experience in the, in the position. Right now, she's the director up at Menominee-Norman Counties, and this is something that we have done in the past, you know, bringing in people at a little bit higher step based on their many years of experience, and this person can basically walk into this job and do it with little or no training. Basically, the only thing that she's going to have to learn is how Clay County does their things, internal procedures and stuff, but, so because this is a request to go above step three, then we had to bring it to the board for approval. What you have in front of you here is some options, everything from a grade 18, step nine, eight, six, eight, and nine. Some of them we, I put in there as a six-month step, so they would come in at six and then go to seven after six months, and that's the one that's highlighted in green, and that's kind of where we thought, according to our pick committee this morning, on what would be a fair wage for this individual. So that, I added that to the bottom and highlighted it in green with, now, these are only 2015 numbers, these don't include the 2016 numbers, but these are pretty much straight numbers for 2015.
Wayne?
I'd like to hear what committee has to say about this.
Well, we had a lot of discussion about this, and it's, this step six going to a seven after a certain amount of time was what we came to, based on this person's extensive experience and...
Thank you. One other question, if I may, Mr. Chair. Would this person, do you feel, accept that, if offered before us today?
I'm not sure if she will. I know that to move to another county and move to a different position, she was looking at salary and benefits, that would have, that would be her deciding factor, so I'm not sure exactly what her threshold was for that, so I'll make the offer and see if she'll accept that.
Do you know if it's more than she's receiving now, or no?
No.
Thank you.
What was the job posted at? I mean, we're offering this step six or step nine, whatever the case may be, what was the job posted at?
When we post a job, we always put a range on there from one to three, because we're never assured that it's going to go higher than that. And so when we post a job, we post it between the ranges, excuse me, one and three.
So she applied for it at ranges one to three?
Correct.
Mr. Chairman, this is, with public health, this has been, this has been an ongoing issue regarding the, the entry level pay of one through three. In most cases, it hasn't worked, it's been turned down. It's the one area, I think we have the biggest flaw in, in our grading system for county employees, and I say that because it's the one area where all of our direct competition for these types of positions come from a large healthcare organization facilities such as Sanford and Ascension and those types of places. We're in strong competition with those types of places. I asked some questions in our pick meeting this morning about the benefit side, and, and I was told by, by our management staff that, that the benefits even at those places are significantly better than what we can offer at the county. So this idea of staying to one to three is just, we're not, we're never going to get anybody, you know, in, in that area, we're just not going to, it's just, in the public health area, it's just difficult. But I, but because we're, because we're in a non-manager, non-managerial position here, you know, I, we weighed heavily about how high we can go and be setting precedences and things moving forward in the future, and we all felt comfortable that with, with the... And we all felt comfortable that with, with the, the amount of expertise that she would bring to the table, he or she, I guess I didn't know which, who it is, but that, uh, that would certainly qualify, and I know we haven't talked about the potential of, uh, we may, we talked a little bit about vacation and sick pay, too. I don't know, Darren, if you want to touch on that as well, but.
Yeah, we talked about, um, in, in the committee, we did talk about the, the step six with the six-month increase, and then also offering a week of vacation and a week of sick leave to start with. Normally, you don't receive that when you come into the position, so that would be an additional incentive for this individual to come in if she had a week of both of those at the, at the beginning of her employment.
Right.
How many public health nurses do we have?
Twenty-one, twenty-two.
Okay, so what would that do as far as morale when we bring someone in, step six or whatever the case may be that we decide on? You know, if, if there's some people here with step one, step two, and we bring someone in, step six?
We've always based our, um, when we employ a nurse, we've always based it on experience, and we have, in the past, as Kevin mentioned, we've come to the board to request a higher step, because we have nurses coming in with, with fifteen, twenty years of experience, and we can't recruit them for the step one to three. So we've, we've done this in the past where we've requested a higher step.
Going to, going to Frank's question, when, when we've done that and we've brought somebody in with more experience and you have your, you still have your least experienced ones working for you, has there ever been any, uh, sour grapes, or they get along and all that kind of stuff?
You know, I've never received one complaint from any of the nurses, and-
Well, so they understand that this person's coming in, is, coming in with some additional qualifications.
They would, in this particular case, absolutely.
Right. I guess my question would be, you know, someone that's been here for, I don't know, three, four years, say we brought him in at step three, could have they applied for this job? I mean, even though it's the same job, had they known they could get step six out of this, would have they applied for this? I mean, I mean, I know it's the same position, but-
But they don't have the thirty years' experience.
That's correct.
I mean, that's where it's different.
Yeah, that's the difference.
And I think that's where we're between, because of the healthcare facilities that are in town. I mean, that's why, that's why we're talking about this, is because they've sent us a precedent in, in order for us to compete, like it or not. We, for us to have a candidate with, with thirty-two years of experience, I mean, that's a benefit for our county.
And I think that, that's exactly right, there, there is a benefit to the county because of the experience and the training issues that, that public health goes through. So we'll have a more productive employee presumably with that experience, uh, starting out, so. Which is why we're willing to pay a little higher rate, so.
And especially with a relocation, I think it's important. I mean, someone's not going to take a, a new job if they're going to have a huge pay cut, I mean, that's just the reality. So if we can entice it however we want, I think it's important.
Any other questions for these fine people this morning? Are the board's wishes?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I would, uh, I would move to authorize staff to enter into a, a offer with this individual that would go to step six with a six-month, uh, step up. And that we would also incorporate in there a one, uh, one week of sick pay and one week vacation pay as part of the incentive package for hire.
I'll second the motion.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing on all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Jenny, come on up. Request to quit claim Agassi recreational trail sections to individual counties. Dennis Marjire, Assistant County Attorney, morning.
Good morning, everyone. So I'm here to discuss the Agassi recreational trail, and we've, in the last six months, had a couple of opportunities to speak to the board about this trail. And I know Commissioner Gross is, uh, very active with the trail. Starting as far back as nineteen ninety-three, we were in a joint powers, um, association with Polk and Norman Counties. And at that time, the trail that stretches from here all the way north to Crookston was deeded to Polk, Norman, and Clay Counties by Burlington Northern Santa Fe. It was done in an interesting way, it was done, um, not in thirds, but rather each county together owned the whole. So, we were in a group with Norman and Polk County owning this trail. And so as you can imagine, the duties and responsibilities that go with the maintenance and the upkeep of that trail were then delegated to the Art Joint Powers Board by the three counties. And up until this fall, that board was managing the trail as a whole, with each county being an owner of the whole trail. Because of some issues in the joint powers board, and we, we talked about this significantly last summer through the fall, this board and the Polk and Norman boards made the decision to dissolve that joint powers board. We felt that the counties individually could manage their sections of the trail collaboratively, but not necessarily as a joint powers, having a bit more autonomy, um, much like county, county highways or county roads, where the, the county where the road is owned does that stretch up until the border and then, uh, into the next county and so forth. So we had, um, contemplated this all the way back since last fall, when the decision was made to dissolve that Art Powers Board. And since that time, I've had an opportunity to look, we, we were somewhat waiting to see which county was going to take the lead on this, um, and I didn't have any, uh, bites from Norman or Polk County. So since that time, I took the deed that we were granted back in nineteen ninety-three from Burlington Northern, and I separated that out into the properties that are located in each respective county for legal descriptions. So I think it's in line with the, uh, the wishes and what was contemplated by this board, and hopefully the other two boards as well. But what I'm asking for today is for signatures on quitclaim deeds to transfer each of those respective sections to the individual county in which that property lies. So there's three quitclaim deeds, one would, they, they all will be from all three counties, because that's who owns them in common right now. One will be transferred to Polk, one will be transferred to Norman, one will be transferred to Clay. If this board signs that, and then we can get the Norman and Polk County boards to sign these, then it will come to fruition that each county will own their own stretch of trail. And again, there's a, um, collaborative committee that now meets to try to cohesively administer and maintain this trail, but it's not a formal joint powers relationship like it had been. And as far as I've heard, and frankly, if you know more, you can, can add, I think it's been going very smoothly, I've not heard any hiccups.
Well, so far, it's gone okay, but I think if something comes up, uh, with this meeting, it's still like the joint powers are still in charge of it, even though we decided to dissolve it. You know, it's still, we'll go back, I don't know, Brian, you can probably, it looks like we're still in charge of it, I mean.
No, Mr. Chair and Commissioner Gross, I think what they were referring to on Friday, we had a meeting on Friday, and I'm sure Commissioner Gross is going to report on that during the, uh, committee reports. But what they were referring to is the obligations that were incurred during that twenty-five years, that if there are still outstanding issues, that, that goes back to the joint powers that was in place at the time. This is one step to try to separate, moving further and further and further away from that. So yes, is it still there if there are some un-
If there's some outstanding bills?
Outstanding issues, yeah.
Issues, hopefully they're all solved.
Well, it didn't sound like it on Friday, but we, I told them we were moving forward with this, that our Assistant County Attorney was bringing this forward, and I think it needs to happen in order for us to move down the road and get away from this, because they, the, the issues that we, we're talking about, even though it was a piece of property up in Polk County, it was the Beltrami section of the trail-
Beltrami Ada.
That's, which we really shouldn't have anything to do with. At the time, the joint powers signed on it to purchase or to, to take over that piece of trail, so they're responsible for any outstanding debt and things on it. That's another reason why we need to move away from that joint powers agreement. There were some things done that maybe-
What issues did they bring up that were still outstanding, are there?
Well, one of them was clo- closing the trail right in Ada, because there was an implement dealer, I think, that had some, some things that he was putting on that trail, and of course, DNR was there and saying, if it's not available as a trail, then you put in jeopardy all of your other trails and monitoring of this, and, and, but it was clear, I think I asked the question too, though, of DNR, as long as it's used as a trail and it's kept open, that there would not be a issue of taking away the funds to maintain those trails, and he agreed with that. But he was kind of throwing out, kind of a black cloud over the thing because of things that could happen.
Yeah.
And that we have to be a little careful of, sometimes the state or the federal government throwing out this cloud that everything is going to, the sky's going to fall if you don't do exactly this. And I think we need to push forward and, and get the deed separated. And that was kind of one of the issues, and then this Beltrami Trail was another issue. That's about the only two issues that I recall from our meeting. You recall anything different?
No, I don't think, I, I mean, I think we're going right across implement dealers or something, this green space or something, and, uh-
That's exactly right, and he's parking equipment on there right now. He wants to buy that, he's gone to the city of Ada, and he would like to purchase that, and that's where it gets him to be kind of sticky. That's why we need to be out of it, so they can handle their sticky issues.
Well, it looks like this quitclaim is a must, we have to, to keep this thing, get final resolution to it, we need to do that, so.
What's the total length of the trail?
Do you recall?
I think it's seven, is it seventy-six miles, or is it?
And then what's Clay County's portion of that?
Five, five miles, yeah.
Five or six.
Okay.
Yeah, we had a very small, um, percentage in comparison, which was one of the reasons that we thought it would make sense to dissolve the board and be responsible for our own, since that joint powers board was not operating very smoothly at the time.
Even though we only had five miles, we were responsible the same, one-third as everybody else.
So then is there going to be any pushback from these other counties, since they're going to have to?
I don't believe so, because this was the intention, the whole time that we were discussing dissolving the joint powers board, this was, it was very transparent that this is where we were headed, and we had a very good support from Norman County, or, no, we had very good support from Polk County. Norman County was a little hesitant, I think, because they have the majority of the trail.
Right.
But in the end, they saw the benefits of this as well. Again, because of the dysfunction of that board, it just wasn't working, the joint powers board wasn't working very well to do what we needed to get done.
I think everybody agreed, uh, that it should, this should happen, we should each be responsible for our own, in our own counties, our own property. We're probably frankly lucky we haven't had bigger issues over the years with, for us.
I, I think it's a good trail, but, excuse me, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, Brian.
It's a good trail, it's a great idea. The way it was operating, as Jenny said, it just wasn't working out, there was just no authority there to, if things weren't right, we had no authority to proceed with anything, you know, we couldn't tell landowners, do this or do that, we had no authority to do that. So, we got to go back to each and the county.
Because, because the way the joint powers agreement was written, it didn't really give the board much authority, it didn't delegate that county authority effectively to the board. So the board was left with really a lack of enforcement, uh, the, the enforcement arm. And so it really was kind of a lame duck, you know, not being able, it did very well, I believe, maintaining the trail. I mean, the trail was always mowed and, you know, the weeds were taken care of and those things, but as it came to some of those disputes, you know, with any property, there's always going to be property disputes, and those just weren't handled very well. So, we're hoping to, to kind of move forward and handle those issues and then stay on top of those issues, county by county, so.
Well, then, I guess I'll move to approve the request to, to quitclaim the sections.
One second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the quitclaim, uh, any further discussion? Hearing on all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign, motion carries, thank you. Recommendations for correctional facility design, construction, and operations committee, Brian.
Well, good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. I have a couple items before you today, and I'd like to pass out the, the, uh, first item is a resolution that was passed by the City Council of Moorhead last night, and it's in support of the building of jail. And we can just finish it on that before we move on. Now, that was passed by them last night, um, another reason why you didn't have it in your packet. And I'll just direct you to the first, now, therefore, and that's at about the fifth paragraph down. It said, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Moorhead, Minnesota, that the City Council supports Clay County's jail construction project. And then, they also do go on to say that, um, the City Council concurs with initiating joint planning and design of a future joint law enforcement facility following the jail construction project. We've talked about, and we've addressed this, commission, about the fact that this is a project, but it's going to have to be done in stages, and I think that's what the city is recognizing and saying they're in support of these projects, but they need to be done in stages, and, and they support wholeheartedly the, us moving forward with the jail project. So that comes to the, the, the first item, I guess, on the, on the memo, and that is a contract with Klein McCarthy, the architectural firm. Let me just pass out the contract. And I know you don't normally go through the contracts and things, but I thought, this project is a big project, it's an important project, we want to keep all members of this council involved, and it'll only take us a few minutes to go through this brief contract. And I was going to do some bullet points on the memo, but I thought I'd just bring this to you. If you will pay attention to the left-hand margin where there's a line out there, that is where there's a deviation from the standard language of, of the contract, and of course, so if we can just run through that on page one. This is between Clay County and Klein McCarthy and Company, L T D Architects. Now, there's only about four, is what we were told, four architectural firms that specialize in jail and, uh, construction, or design, I should say, and that is why it's, it's tough to find one locally that specializes in jail construction. Klein McCarthy is out of St. Louis Park in the cities, so. It talks about the fact that this agreement is dated the twenty-first day of, and that's today of April. And up on top of the second page, the objective of the planning study is to review the county campus landscape and suggest a layout for a new county jail of approximately a hundred and eighty-eight beds. That would have been, and approved beds of about a hundred and fifty-five, I think we studied, because you cannot go to a hundred percent. It's impossible to fill a, a jail to that capacity because of the diversity that you have within it. And a new law enforcement center, center capable of housing both the Moorhead Police Department and the Clay County Sheriff's Office. Consideration will be given to the onsite heating plant, the capacity to supply the needs of both new buildings, and how much such energy would be conveyed to those buildings. The study will incur, or include an overview of required parking necessities- The study will incur, or include an overview of required parking necessity necessary and include options to provide the required amount. Now, what this is, they're not, this is not a contract to design the jail. What the committee asked for, and we have two members sitting at this table of that committee, our three, I guess, would be, was that we look at the overall view again of the campus and see where the best placement for these buildings would be. So this is this initial, initial contract for getting, getting, moving down the road.
And Brian, can I interrupt you for a minute?
Oh, you gotcha.
The, I think the other thing that we need to incorporate in here, because I, I think the, if you recall, we kept two plans kind of on the table of the original five that Klein McCarthy had presented to us in, in two thousand and seven or two thousand and eight. But we talked about one hundred and eighty-eight beds here, but we also talked about the design allowing for an, an additional pod for expansion.
That's correct.
And I, I think if we're gonna be talking about this layout and this, and all this, that they need to also understand that component, that we need to be able to expand it, or the county might need to be able to expand in thirty or forty years.
Right.
That's what I'm getting at.
Yes, Mr. Chair and Commissioner Campbell, you're absolutely spot on. The two options that we did talk about, they were a little bit different layout, but they said that if we would have to, if we use the second option, that was kind of like a hundred and fifty-five beds, that they would have to add the pod on right away. But if we went with a hundred and eighty-eight bed, currently were the annex, and that's the minimum security, the old sheriff's house that you see over there, that is going to be eliminated. And that space would be reserved for a sixty-bed expansion in fifteen to twenty years. So I, I think that is the understanding too.
I just didn't, I didn't know if it was in here, but I, it's, while we're applying the site, the site design, it's important to understand-
Yep. Okay, and then the, the other notation down there on the side is two point two one. Master planning to be completed with two to three months to allow the owners to utilize the materials for public education awareness prior to the general election vote of November, and that is November twenty sixteen, to be, to determine selecting funding methods. And what we've talked about there is that we need some schematics and some overviews and some professional presentation before we go to the public, is what we talked about at our last meeting. And so they feel they can do that. And one of the things that you've talked about too as a board is that we need to proceed forward with the jail. It's the funding source that we have some options on and, and we want the public to weigh in on, and we need to educate the public to that effect. And then down on the bottom there is just the programs that the architects and, and what they will address, and that goes into the, to the next page as well. And then on the third page, you'll see for planning purposes, it's two point six point one point one. For the planning purposes, the architect utilized the previous Clay County schematic design solutions and/or the architect design solutions used at Douglas County, Minnesota, in order to lay out the site, building connections and heating plant capacities. And one thing that we talked about with the architect, we somewhat reported on that last week, I think, is that in the interview that we had with the Klein McCarthy architects is that with the utilization of the schematics and things and the work that they've already done, we would be talking maybe a five and a half to six percent contract for fees versus a seven or eight percent in utilizing the current one. And that's why we are recommending as a committee, I think, to, to go with this dream. So now we get, jump into page four. And the only thing on that page is down there under Article Three, and that's the visits and things that they're talking about. But if there's more visits that are needed, they'll certainly do that because this contract is on an hourly basis and we'll, we'll, we'll get to the, to the fees. So then on page five, compensation. This is for an hourly rate not to exceed, and I know you guys are, you folks were sensitive to that, so I asked him for an estimate of what he would need to do this. And the hourly rate sheet is attached, but they will use probably different rates depending upon who works on the project. But the hourly rate sheet is attached, not to exceed thirty-five thousand for this initial contract. And then, of course, the reimbursable is not to exceed ten percent. We could negotiate a sum, a lump sum as we move forward, if we get a set amount established. And it's one percent, one point one five percent of the, I think that's on the invoice overruns. And then the, the other point that he was negotiable to, and being, he was from the Twin Cities, I found it a little difficult to pay both ways. And I mentioned that to one of you, or maybe Vicki and I discussed it. He agreed that we would only have to pay one way of travel time, which I think is reasonable. And that's it, Mr. Chair and Council, or Commission. We're looking at a, not to exceed thirty-five thousand and kind of reviewed what he's gonna cover with it.
And he's looking at a two or three month timeframe.
I think when we met with the committee too, everybody was impressed with, with them. And I think the feedback we've gotten about this firm is all positive, so in terms of their other projects, so Jenny, do you have some?
Do you have any estimate with that two percent that we'll be saving for their, since we're going with them and Douglas County went with them? You mentioned there's a two percent savings. Do you have any estimate as to what that would be?
Well, if it's a twenty-five million dollar project-
It's on the whole project, is-
That's where, that doesn't apply here. This is an hourly rate, because this is still just kind of an initial study for the layout. When they get into design of, of, let's say that we do decide to go with a parking ramp, that decision hasn't been made yet. He felt that maybe an architectural fee of four and a half percent for that, and he felt that the design of the jail probably five and a half to six. If we were starting out new, it'd be seven to eight percent, he said, for a project that size. So, and one percent of, it's two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So it's probably, yeah, three hundred to three hundred and fifty thousand dollar savings.
I think so.
Is he also gonna take a look at kind of altering things as Commissioner Whelan had maybe said we should look at in terms of the jail on the north end and-
Yep.
Okay. It's just a matter of just moving things around.
That's exactly right. That's exactly right.
So when we will get a look at that too?
Right. And in follow-up, if I may, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Campbell, with the, the heating plant, I've already talked with, with Joe Olson to start asking his people that service that, coolers and the boilers and all that kind of stuff, to try to be thinking about the capacities and how to tie in and things like that, because that's something he will do, but any steps we can say will save us dollars, so.
Any other questions for Brian on this board's wishes?
Can I just, you know, I, I just wanna say that we, when we had that, when we had this meeting and we, and we met with Klein McCarthy, we, we talked about several other things, another one being a project manager.
Yes.
You know, and I, and I think it's, it became pretty clear to all of us that a project manager and this type of a project wouldn't be worthwhile to move forward with too. So, so, you know, after these two or three months that we get this, I, I think we better be ready to, to take, go to that next level and, and start getting that project manager or start looking for one and, and start digging some holes.
And if I'm not mistaken, he said that the vast majority of these projects now have project managers rather than general contractors, and it's because the project manager watches, sole job is to watch out for our interests and, and that the costs are contained and that type of thing, so.
And Mr. Chair, you felt also that there would be enough savings or even more savings than what your general manager would cost you.
General contractor.
So, because then it goes to the gen, they are the general versus the general taking ten percent of the other bits, so.
Okay, on to the board's wishes.
I'll make a motion that we incorporate the, or whatever, hire these guys to do the job.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the board. And then the second item I have there is add, it was talked about at the, at this committee, and I think maybe Commissioner Campbell was the one that made the recommendation to add Mr. Rick Hovenson to the Correctional Facility Construction and Operational Committee membership. And I've contacted him, I've talked with him on the phone yesterday, and he is certainly willing to serve on this committee, so.
And that actually, that actually came from during our meeting last, Anderson had brought up that there was another local person who has a background in, in construction and engineering.
Architect.
Architect, yeah. And so we just thought that having somebody locally with that expertise certainly wouldn't hurt, so it was actually, actually the request of last to have him brought on, that I, I think it was, makes good sense, so.
Do we need a motion to add him on, or?
I, I think we did in all the others, so I think we should.
I'll make that motion.
What second?
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
All in both, same sign, motion carries.
Mr. Chair, just one other discussion point for this project. Would you like us to put together a resolution or something along this line, or would you like to make a motion in regards to this council, or this commission in support of the jail project and moving forward?
I think that would be a good idea, since we have one from the Morehead City Council. I think we should have one on record too.
Yeah, that's, we had talked about it for a couple of weeks, and, and we said, well, you know, signing a contract is a commitment, but, but we also talked and, and this little voice that keeps my conscience clear over to my right over there said-
Yeah, I think, I think that's good, that we, we wouldn't have that, so.
Okay. Good. No, we'll do that and bring before the board.
Yeah, why don't you have something drafted up?
Thank you very much.
Okay, committee reports. Wayne?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Last Tuesday, April fourteenth, I had the building committee meeting. I wasn't able to stay for all of it, so I will defer to Frank to report on that. And then received a note from Al Trossup, whom we honored at luncheon last Tuesday, and it was addressed to me and the other county commissioners. Al says, thank you very much for the award, which was presented to me on the fourteenth of April. It was not expected, but much appreciated. I am proud to live in a county and state that work hard to make life a bit easier for people who are struggling to survive with the cards they have been dealt. And of course, those who have not always made the best decisions. I am proud to be a citizen of Clay County. Thanks again, Al Trossup. And Al has given an award for volunteer driving for many, many years. And several of us were at that event. And then on Thursday, April sixteenth, Lake Agassiz Regional Library Finance Committee meeting, general business. And then we had an investment report on Lake Agassiz's funds from representatives of Morgan Stanley and Franklin Templeton Investments, and we discussed our preliminary budget. And so far, all is going quite well. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Frank?
Okay, I guess Tuesday, I guess after our meeting, we, the build committee, which he referred to, we, we met a little bit in the morning and reconvened back in the afternoon. In the morning, they had quite a few, what they call priority items. And then I think we felt as a committee that some of those items that they got as critical items should be just under, kind of maintenance of, like family service center, you know, they said it was a critical item, but those items really should just come under maintenance of the family service center. I think they had a hundred and eight dollars, a hundred and eight thousand dollars worth of critical items. And when they came back in the afternoon, they dropped it down to twenty-six thousand. So there's quite a few things that are just turned over to general maintenance. Some of the big things are that the courthouse, there's a tower loop for the cooling system that needs to be replaced, some of the pipes are getting corroded. Another thing was the, the chiller software. I don't know if I explained that good enough, but in the power plant, that needs to be replaced too. So those are some of the critical items that need to be replaced, so they've got a plan set up where they're gonna start working on these items. I mean, they're gonna put them on the budget and incorporate it into their budget, you know, so. There's quite a few channel maintenance things, they're looking at the lawn sprinkler system that needs to be updated, and they have a list of about twenty items on there, so. And they've got a one, one, one to three-year plan, they got a three to five-year plan, a five to ten-year plan, so they're working on that, and it looks like Joe's got a pretty good handle on that. Then attended the volunteer dinner, which Wayne referred to. That evening, I went to Riverton Township and to Linden Township and attended their Pretty good, I mean, they, they didn't have any concerns other than they reckon, Linden Township is very concerned about the evaluations, the way we're doing land evaluations, we're trying to get to ninety-five percent, you know, and they're saying, I mean, I think we're supposed to be in the ninety percent to the hundred and five percent range. And their concern is, why aren't we at ninety percent? Why do we have to be at ninety-five percent range? So, pretty much concerned about that, so.
Because if you're at ninety, next thing you could be at eighty-nine.
Right. That's true. I mean, but that was, that was a concern there, you know, as far as the land evaluations, you know? If we got that leeway for going from ninety to hundred and five, why aren't we at ninety? Why do we have to be at ninety-five? Wednesday, went with Dave Overwood down to Holly, which we pretty much covered already, you know, at, during the general meeting, it was going over that thing as far as their requests to get that on the, on the five-year plan. Thursday, FM Coq, there we pretty much went over the personnel manual, the new Bill Christian, Christian who has taken over, he's really redone the personnel manual, went over the budget evaluations of the Heartland Trail. Friday, Agassiz Trail, which I guess we covered already too, some of the, we went up to Ada, now Dave and Brian and I went up to Ada for a meeting there. Last night, I went to Keene Township. Pretty much discussion on, very much concern on road, road construction, which we'll discuss with Dave and stuff, but not road construction, road maintenance. So, that's it.
Jenny?
I was also at the, the volunteer appreciation luncheon with the rest of the commissioners. I had historical society this week, excuse me, last week, where we discussed admission and it's, they've had a freeze on admission prices for a while, so they did make a motion to increase that. Membership will not go up. And then they also talked about the Comstock House and if they're wanting to take over and, and kind of help facilitate that in a partnership. Lakes and Prairies had a community action training day yesterday in Fergus Falls with Mojave and West Central, and it was just a, a great opportunity to have all the different entities kind of get together and collaborate. And it was, it was very good. Also, they had a little celebration to honor Joe Peterson with his retirement coming up. And that concludes my report.
Kevin?
Okay, this week, I had a regional juvenile detention center meeting on Thursday, and that was well-attended. We introduced our official Clay County, or Cass County Board member that's new to the organization. We went through both the two thousand fourteen budget and the two thousand fifteen year-to-date budget. We talked about bed licensing with Mindoc, and we talked about the work that's being done by Michael J. Burns right now to try to look at ways to modify that building to allow for more room for beds. I don't know if all of you received an email recently from Steve, but it's, as of yesterday, we were at capacity again, and we could take no more kids in there. And this is a far cry difference from what it was two or three years ago when we were, we were running about twenty percent. So, but the meeting went, meeting went well. Steve was well-prepared and, and then also talked about some programming issues and educational issues with the Morehead Public Schools. Then this morning, we had our PIC committee meeting, and we, we did discuss the issue with the nurses, and we took the action on that today, so that's all I have.
And that's all I had was the PIC meeting, and then the only other report I would have is on trout fishing in Montana, and that's excellent, I can report, so.
I do wanna say too that I went to the, to that same volunteer driver luncheon, and I think we got a-
I think we gotta commend our staff too for, uh, they, they really went out of their way to make sure that all of those volunteer drivers were very well-recognized. And, uh, obviously, the number one source we wanna recognize is the people that are coming out and volunteering for us. And there's a lot of them. And they do a lot of good work. But our staff did a nice job as well.
I think that's a good point, Kevin. If you don't have good staff working with the volunteers, they won't continue to volunteer. So, it's a good, good, good point. So... Brian?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, the Capitol Building Committee, uh, Mr. Gross did a good job reporting on that. And Joe and Georgia will be bringing that to the full board for your update and input and different things as well. So, uh, they're really taking it to heart and, and doing a very good job on it. I agree with that volunteer driving program. I thought that was very, very nice. Uh, Commissioner Angersall did a good job too of presenting that plaque. And, uh, yeah, for the staff to do a little research on each one of those volunteer drivers and to give them the credit that they deserve is very nice. I had a diversion administrative advisory meeting last Thursday morning that I attended and, uh, strategizing how to proceed forward. Uh, the juvenile center meeting I sat in on, uh, last Thursday morning as well, I thought went well. I think there's a real upbeat tone there that wasn't there a few years ago, because it's, uh, how do we handle the growth? And, and that's a whole lot better than struggling with the, the dollars on it. Because, well, and I say struggling, it, it allows them to, to engage in programs that they didn't have before and couldn't afford. Uh, and there is a flyer, I don't know if everybody got it or not, but the juvenile center and, uh, Benson Psychology is sponsoring a one-day, um, I think it's a juvenile sex offender program in Fergus Falls in June. I think it's June 4th or something like that. That might be good for anybody that is interested in that type of thing to, to attend, because that has really exploded, um, these juveniles committing sexual offenses. And I think it, uh, Steve just tells me all the time that this younger population is getting more violent, more aggressive, more difficult to handle. And, and it's part of it as well. So, you may wanna consider that. Uh, had a central management administration meeting on Thursday as well. Uh, attended that art committee meeting in Ada with Commissioner Gross and, and the engineer, Dave Overbolt. Um, and we covered that, I think, quite well today and other things. Um, and Matt and I have worked a couple times on some, some, uh, you guys had asked us to look at the dispatch center and how we can phase that in. And I think we made some progress there. And we all wanna have some discussions on that. And attended PIC meeting this morning. So, that's it, Mr. Chair.
Wayne?
Mr. Chair, shortly, I'm gonna return to the funeral of a lady named Marge Pacel, uh, her husband Dewey Pacel, former Clay County Commissioner, and a colleague of mine that is a teacher. So, I just wanted to make that announcement. Thank you.
Anything else, Vicki? Jenny? Frank, did you hear that last?
No, I didn't.